Thank you. All right, so we'll call the council time agenda to order. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll begin council time with public comment. And I remind all those who wish to make public comment, agenda items only. Do we have anyone in the room? I see a lot of distinguished people in the room. We look forward to hearing from you on these other issues. Anyone online?
Don't see anybody online.
Seriously?
Looking. Don't.
Well, let's move immediately to old business, the minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes?
I have a comment on the minutes and
Please, go ahead.
correction. Under old business on the minutes, the freight rail dependent use, it mentions that the recommendation was for option six. And just, I believe that needs some clarification because we didn't adopt the option six. We made some changes to it. And I believe it would be worthwhile to include more of the specifics related to those changes. And I can tell you what those changes are that I received from.
Yeah, so I did look at the minutes. I didn't see an issue with that, so I'm going to pull them back up. That's what we were directing staff to do to move forward. Nothing was adopted, if that's the, if it's just the choice of words. But we did ask staff to go back to the advisory committee's option, which was at one point labeled option six. And we did have three votes, three thumbs up, not official votes, to direct staff in that regard. So I have the minutes up now.
And I can also share that one of the takeaways that we did was to outline a process and bring that back to council. And community planning has already done a draft of that. So hopefully we'll be bringing that back either next week or the following week.
Okay, that's good to hear. But there was a few strikeouts and it was the definite define adjacent up to one mile was removed and it was using the January 9th, 2018 overlay map.
All right, so is there a change to the minutes you think are warranted?
I would just describe those two changes that option six.
Okay, well, I'm going to move to adopt the minutes as written. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, we do have a second further discussion.
Chair?
Yes, please, Glenn.
I do agree with Council Marshall on this. We had definitely changed the language to remove the one, the reference to one mile and to use the existing overlay. So I would be supportive of Council Marshall's recommendations on this one.
So your point is to add additional language?
Yeah, that is correct.
We're looking at the minutes. We're not looking at option six. We're looking at the minutes. And we're only talking about the minutes. So is your request to add additional language to the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and state it.
I
Do you want me to Go ahead, Counselor.
I think he's deferring to you, Sue.
All right. It was just those two additions that I would include to specifically say that we've removed the definition of adjacent of one mile. That was taken out. And that we, a majority agreed to use the January 9th, which I believe is 2018 overlay map. Just those two changes, just to include those things. I think there's a number of people that are very concerned about how we're moving forward. And it would be better to be specific of what a majority of the council agreed to. Have that reflected in the minutes. That's what I'm asking.
Okay, so adding that we discussed deleting the one mile and sticking to the 500 feet. Adding that we agreed to stick to the existing map for right now. And the third comment I had made at the time, and I don't know if it was reflected in the thumbs up or not, but amending the language to add sewer or septic, not one or the other. In any case, is there any objection, Michelle, to adding that additional language to the minutes?
Counselor Medvedji, this is Leslie Lopez. I'm sorry to jump in here, but
Go ahead.
Because there's already a motion on the floor. It sounds as though Council Marshall is making a friendly amendment. So are you in agreement with the friendly amendment? Since you made the original motion?
Thanks, Leslie. Let me run the meeting. Michelle, do you have any objection to adding that additional language? Glenn, do you have any objection to adding that additional language?
No.
Sorry, Counselor Medvedji, I don't have any objection.
Okay. All right, so the motion on the floor is to amend the minutes, add that language. And let's just by voice vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, that sounds unanimous. The motion passes. The minutes will be adopted as amended. ARPA funding update.
Am I on? Am I on? Yep. Good morning, council. Mark Gasway, Clark County Finance Director. I'm so glad that Rebecca turned off my three minutes because this is going to take a little longer than three minutes today to go over. So I'm pleased to meet with you this morning to have this discussion about ARPA. And again, in a council time, we have the opportunity to have some back and forth. So please, as we're going through this, it's not a presentation, it's not a work session. This is an opportunity to have some discussion on ARPA. So this slide, and I believe everyone has these materials. I want to make sure that everyone has them. Yep, okay. So I want to start with this slide. This slide is a summary of where we're at today. You can see in the upper left-hand side there, the initial grant. You can see in the committed column, the amount that the county council has already committed. And then the next column over, how much we've actually spent. You can, I hope you can see we're starting to make progress on the spend amount. We're actually starting to get a lot of this out the door now. The part we want to focus on today is the uncommitted fees. At the very bottom, in the very bottom row, you'll see that the county has approximately almost $13 million uncommitted. And I'm sure you're thinking, well, the last time we saw that, it was $6 million. Or the last time we saw that, it was $7 million. What we've done in preparation for the 2024 budget, Lori Young has gone out and requested information from all those recipients, those internal recipients, of the amount that they have intend to spend through the end of this year and carry over into next year. And at the same time, she's also requested if they are not, if there are amounts that they are not going to spend or be able to use, that those also, they indicate that. And we've returned that to this uncommitted, uncommitted number. So that's why it looks a little bit higher than you may have remembered in the past. Later on, when we do some financial reporting, you're going to see different numbers as well because those were, that was the amount that was uncommitted at that time, either at the end of 2022 or at the end of June of this year. So the amount that we're focusing on today is that 12.79 number. And we're going to go through some requests that have been put forth by various departments and consider. They're really right now for your consideration. The staff reports that you'll review are not, we're not going to vote on those today other than perhaps putting those forward to a hearing to formally approve. So let's go on to the next slide. Okay, this is the amount of staff reports that we've received from various departments throughout the county. And we, I believe you have the individual staff reports. And we'll go through those one at a time. And you'll have an opportunity to discuss those. We've invited the departments that have put those forward to be here today in case there's questions that we are unable to answer on our side. These projects have all been reviewed for eligibility. So that's not a question that we need to answer today. That has been all previously answered. So all of these projects are eligible. And then it's just a matter of whether council decides to put that forward for a formal approval. Okay, any questions on that? So I really want to start with, and most of these will be in order. But I really wanted to start with the formal adoption of the staff report or the approval of the staff report for the community grant program. I know that both the counselors here and Counselor Young were part of those committees. And we did a lot of work to get those decisions made. And so the first staff report is the one that says AUD 06-23. And it talks about the formal adoption of the grants or the extension, extending of those grants that we would do. And I don't know if you have that before you, but I wanted to make one, point out one thing. And I'm going to turn this over to council so the different committees can talk about the grants that we went through. We were just over the amount that was originally allotted. We, the council had approved $3 million. And you'll see in the staff report that we're about $41,000 over. So I would suggest as we prepare this staff report for formal adoption, that we include an amendment to the $3 million for that $41,000. So, and again, we're not formally approving these today. We're just reviewing these. And these will come back to you on a hearing at a future date. So
So I wanted to ask a clarifying question just to make sure it encompasses what we had previously discussed. So this year, it did not sit on the business. I understood that you were somewhat under
Yes.
that threshold. So some of it could be attributed to a reallocation from the business grants to the nonprofit grants.
Correct.
So, and I'm all in favor of making these adjustments. And so that we cover, and so the other grant or other counselors who may not have participated in this, I mean, there were quite a few grant requests that we did not approve the entirety of their requests. Either because we saw their request is somewhat falling outside of the parameters of the request or we just thought it was too much for that particular activity. So we did exercise due diligence in cutting down the amounts that were allocated. The other issue that's come up that we had talked about that I saw on construction grants from last year's round, it's something we just didn't consider. We consider it for our own county contracts. Whenever we have a capital-related projects, we usually put in a buffer there for the manager to approve, hey, if there's 5% over or 10% over on the costs as materials rise. And we saw that with the ribbon cutting ceremony at Outsiders in Shelter right across the street. You know, they had, I think they ultimately were about $14,000 short in that capital project just because of cost increases. So that came up in our discussion was, well, how do we deal with that situation with that kind of grant? Because I think there should be some flexibility. Obviously, you have to do the accounting and we have to fall within it. So is there, is there somewhere that we could amend this report to also include an amendment process for some of these capital projects? If there are overages that either the manager could approve or the county council could approve within the capacity of the ARPA funds?
I don't know the answer to that question, but I did see that Leslie was on. And as we prepare the contracts, I know that we are pretty diligent in scoping out what the work is going to be and ask them to plan, you know, pretty tight on those types of things. I was thinking another example of this was the North Country MS. We found out after a year of construction that they came back that everything is more expensive now. And so I don't know if we can do that in advance. I think it's likely we would have to have that request. And that particular organization, at the end, it wasn't part of this package. But they did send me some information and I'll present that to council at the very end of the ARPA today.
So an option for that too, you know, for anything that's moving forward for council's consideration, we can add on there a percentage or delegating a dollar amount, like a 10% contingency to the county manager, if that's something you want to do. And we could probably look historically. And if they haven't said that, we can do one staff report to identify that, if that's what council would like to do.
And because a lot of these are more service oriented, I don't know that we would need to deal with all of them. But certainly those that would have a construction type of a component, we might want to consider that. So we can look at that in the actual contracting process. And when we bring the staff report to you for approval, we could put on, I guess, a paragraph that says, in the case of overruns on construction, there's a 10% contingency or something. I think we can do that. But I'll check with Leslie.
And so today, you're looking for a thumbs up on the staff
Yes.
report to move it forward?
Exactly.
Any questions or comments on the staff report?
Just, and that's just this one. We're going to go through them one at a time, so.
Okay. So do you need individually to have a thumbs up or just at the end?
A thumbs up from council and we'll put it on a hearing is what we'll do. So comments or questions?
Well, thumbs up for me, and I like the idea of that contingency fund. And I would just say, having participated, and it was a great deal of work because we had a lot of applications under the nonprofit sector. And I would just say, there's a lot of small nonprofits, and big ones too, with a lot of volunteers that are doing a lot of work to serve our community. And they definitely took a hit with COVID, in large part because they were not able to do fundraising. And I believe that a number of them are beginning to come out of that. But at the same time, needs have increased. So I'm just grateful that we have this fund to be able to stabilize some of them and, you know, bring them forward as we, as the needs continue to expand.
Okay, so we have two thumbs up. Michelle, Glenn, supportive, against, questions?
Sorry, I'm trying to unmute myself. I support that as well. I also like the contingency language.
Well, we'll try to build that in.
Okay, and Glenn, I think I heard you
Yes.
give a verbal thumbs up. Okay, super. So unanimous.
And just to be clear, this one will include that small increase over the $3 million because that was previously approved. And I want to make sure that the council is all in agreement, that we can bump it up just that.
That was clear to me, Sue?
I agree.
Okay. One more?
I agree.
Yeah, thank you. All right, we've got it. All right, the next staff report that I want to bring to you, it's AUD 02. And as we were going through this ARPA grant, starting several years ago, we've always set aside funding to administer the grant. I just want to make sure before we commit all of the funding that we can, that we can do this through the end of 2026. And what this does, it just kind of sets aside, and I don't know that we'll need it all, but it's likely that we'll be reporting clear to the end. And I want to make sure that we have enough funding set aside. So that's what this AUD 02 does. It sets aside funding, not budgeting. We'll have to budget it each year like we always do. But it commits it so that we aren't, we aren't spending it. So any questions on what this one is? And again, I'll need a thumbs up and we'll put it forward.
It's certainly very prudent. I have no questions. Other comments or
I would support this.
So this is 02-24 AD staff report to add the, or include the $125,000 in administrative?
Yes, that's about, that's the yearly cost, but then there's some overhead and other things, so.
Counsel, out on the internet, are you in agreement?
Yep.
Yes, I concur.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just my, my own comment. I appreciate so much the administrative support that we have from Laura on this. She's, she's very skilled and very in tune to what we need to know to keep us on the straight and narrow with this. And I want to make sure that we have that funding available. The next one that I'm going to bring to council for your consideration is, it's BCC 01. And I think I had these in order as I, hopefully you got them in the same order I gave them to you. And this is the Neighborhood Outreach Program. It is for the resigning of neighborhoods and neighborhood association signs. Does that one sound familiar? The amount on it is about, sorry, $33,500.
So for a little background on this one, so in 1999 is when this department was formed. There is an administrative guideline document that does state that the county will have signs for the neighborhood association placed on the northwest, east and south side of the association. They haven't been updated, so some of them are wrong, vandalized or missing. They did work with Public Works Sign Shop to get a quote because there's new safety regulations as well for like the poles to make sure that they can be a little bit flexible if they're hit by a car to reduce our liability that way. So that, that's what this request was for.
So this is a new one to me and it's fine. I can't, I'm trying to think that I've ever actually seen a physical sign somewhere. But any questions or comments on this additional, it's 33,000 roughly?
33,500.
I just have a quick comment. I know that Falida Neighborhood Association, they are, I don't know what their status is. They might not be a full-fledged neighborhood association at this point, but they're also a nonprofit. And it may, I don't know if it needs to be renamed, but that's just one. I can talk to other people about that. But just to make sure that all of the names are appropriate because I know some of them have changed.
And I think the county manager office will update those as well.
Yes, Mary Lee is in our audience. She oversees this program. So yes, she will make sure that the correct names would be out there in accordance with the guidelines.
I can speak about, I can speak about the Falida Neighborhood Association because that's my neighborhood. It's inactive right now, but Mary Lee is actively trying to recruit for that vacancy. So it's still the Falida Neighborhood Association, but they need a president. And during my last town hall, I mentioned that to the audience. And I've been actually asking a lot of questions about that. But it's still the same neighborhood name association. My question is, is this a part of the Public Works finance? I guess I'm a little confused about the funding for this. Is it associated with Public Works?
So the funding request is ARPA funding, to use that funding to pay for it. But Public Works would be installing the signs and helping with that process. So Public Works will do the work, but it's actually funded from ARPA.
Okay, why is it, why is this specifically funded by ARPA?
The request, it's a request today, as with all these requests for ARPA funding. And I can tell you, because in our budget, which is where this department is in, we don't have that funding to pay for the signage. So that is why we're asking for ARPA.
Okay, that answer, that answers my question. Thank you, Kathleen.
And so with that answered, do you support this, Michelle?
Yeah, yes, I do. I do see, at least in my district, I do see neighborhood association signs, not for all of them, but I think two or three at least in my district anyway. But I think that would be a welcome thing to have around all of our districts because a lot of people, when they come to me at least for District Two with concerns, they aren't even aware that there are neighborhood associations that are out there or available or that they can connect with. So I think this is a great thing.
Chair? You do have three supporting. Glenn, any objection?
No, no objection. I just did have a quick question. I was at the NAC meeting where this was discussed. And there was a little bit of conversation on this. But I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the signage is adaptable so that we don't run into the problem in the future where it's difficult or expensive to replace or add to as neighborhood associations change or are created?
Understood. I think the poles is what's going to cost most of the money. So that will not have to be replaced unless they're hit by a car and have to replace. And then Johnny, or Mary Lee can work with Public Works to see how we can adjust that. But they haven't been updated for many, many, many years. But understand your comments.
Okay, so I think we're ready to move on to the next hearing in training room.
Correct. This is a request to continue to upgrade and improve the audio system. And I'm going to send it back over to Kathleen in a second here. As you know, with the hybrid nature of our meetings, audio has been a challenge. And so this is a request to continue to improve that in
Yes, and I would say that this request and the next one are both supporting that. The first one that's before you is the wireless mics. And so those are the ones that when we set up in the room with the tables, there's a lot of boards and commissions and departments that use those. They're starting to break and not work any longer. They can't hold a charge. So this is for replacement of those particular mics.
Coming from someone who's severely hard of hearing, I appreciate additionally moving forward to improve our conditions. Any questions or comments by any counselor?
I'm supportive.
Michelle, Glenn?
I'm definitely, definitely supportive.
Super. And so you have three?
Yeah, and I'll talk briefly about the second one. That's a little bit more money. This is regarding the audio in the hearing room. And so again, this has been brought up because of having hybrid meetings now. So just, this is a very high estimate because we have not had a review. But it's really to bring people in to look at our system and how we can enhance it. So those who are calling in is, you can hear it more clearly in the room. That's our goal is to make sure, because I know when you're on your computer at home, it's really clear. When you're in here, sometimes it's hard to understand. So still look at our whole audio system in this room and come back with recommendations on improving that.
So I do have a quick question. Is it just this room? Because for instance, the RTC uses the other room. And we've juggled different meetings in the different rooms depending on the quality of the audio visual. Is it just this room for this 300 grand?
Yeah, I believe it was mostly for this room. But I can ensure that the review is done because it might be connected on the system. So we'll, we'll do a review.
And I agree. I think that both rooms are connected in the same system. It's just an activation of that when the doors are open in the back. And they have to do something different so that you can hear. I've been in the back sometimes and it's just not working, so.
Okay, super. I am supportive. Michelle, Glenn?
I'm supportive. I think it's a critical need. I think it's a critical need.
I do too. I agree with Counsel Marshall.
Okay, okay. The next one is the, it's DST-8-43, the JABs renewal. So this has to do with our court system. We have a one-time funding request for those licenses to continue. I'll wait, see if they have any questions, questions on this.
So I kind of lost sight of this. I'm supportive of it. I'm just, what is the law in the hybrid environment, in the court environment, for trials or hearings or collaborative courts? Is there a mandate that they continue in a hybrid or have access in a hybrid way to the public?
And I'm going to defer, I think Cheryl is on.
I think the P.A., or are you going to?
Want to sit here? Yeah.
Ma'am? I'm not here for this. Just a question about the JABs system. It doesn't, except for the hybrid system, that's just a court, that's the court recording system in general.
And just to add to what Mr. Golick said, the JABs connects with the jail. So that's the conduit that everything happens through the court system. District courts on JABs, and then I think Superior Courts also potentially exploring that as well. So that's just the conduit that happens.
This is Superior Courts on JABs also? Yeah, this is, instead of court reporters, we have, you know, a court recording system, and that's JABs is the system.
Okay, super. Thanks for clarifying that. So I'm supportive.
I support it.
I support that.
Super. Okay, I think we can move on then, okay?
The next staff report request is the elections, the remodeling of the 1408 Franklin building for the elections department, and the movement of the auto license to the public service center. And I think you've seen this before, however, we're bringing it back in the context of all of the ARPA requests.
And I do see the auditor present in the room as well. So I support this. The question I have is, we just did a fairly substantial remodel like two years ago, two plus years ago. I can't remember if it was before or after the pandemic, kind of, it's becoming Groundhog Day in some respect. But so my question goes to, is there, is this it? I mean, is there like a master plan for getting your space where you need to have it?
Yeah, come on up. I believe the previous remodel was just temporary things to allow the elections to take place as COVID demanded. I mean, it was, it was certain things that were put in place. This is a, more of a facilities, walls moving, that type of a thing, so.
So, oh, thank you. Greg Kinsey, County Auditor. So the last major expansion, remodel of that building happened in 2003. About four or five years ago, we did some modifications. Those modifications will continue to stay in place after this current planned expansion. So everything, everything we did a few years ago is still going to be in place. Well, maybe with exception of a couple of doors we put in that might, may no longer be used. And I would add to your other comment, Counsel Medjig, the hope is, the plan is, that this expansion of this work area would enable the elections office to continue to conduct elections in a timely, efficient manner for at least the next 20 years. So just like in 2003, we did the remodel of 1408 Franklin, it's now 20 years later, we think this planned expansion would also accommodate this for the next 20 years.
Thank you for that. And that last four or five year ago remodel was what I was referring to. So I am supportive. Other comments or questions by counsel?
I'm supportive as well, but I have a question.
Hold on, Michelle. Go ahead, finish your comment.
I just have a question. So I know there's overall remodeling and changes going on. Was this included in the overall? I think money has been set aside for that, or is this in addition to that? I'm just wondering how this shakes out with the overall plan.
I would just say the overall space planning, yes, is included in that. This is money specific for meeting the needs of the auditor's office and the remodel, which that money is not set aside. There is some money set aside, but it would not cover all the changes and what the auditor is asking.
Got it. So this is in addition, so I support this.
This would be the physical facility, actual change in the facility rather than the planning, as Kathleen said.
Michelle, you had a comment or question?
Yes, I thought we weren't going to be discussing this until October. This is, this is a lot of money, and I thought we were going to have a separate work session or discussion about this at a later time.
So, Counselor, what we were requested to do is bring back all of the ARPA requests in the context of the ARPA requests. So that's really what's happening today. I think the October is a facilities.
I believe it's the capital, capital projects as part of the 2024 budget process.
Yeah, it's a budget process, not an ARPA request. This is the approval of using ARPA funds for a specific project.
So am I correct to understand that if this moves forward today, in the middle of October, there'll be a hearing when there'll be budget approval asked for?
Correct.
Is that correct?
I would say yes, but I just found out some additional information, because we have to get the architect and engineer onboard, because they actually will drive the scope of work, which then will go out for an RFP for your building. So we need that before we can do the RFP. But yes.
Yeah, I understand we need to have the budget approval before we do the RFP. My question is, when, is it anticipated that the request for the budget approval will occur in October?
I don't have that specific date. I know the reports will be ready the first week of October of all capital reports. That's the estimated timeframe.
Well, as Counsel Belkot mentioned, yeah, it's been my understanding that budget approval will occur.
I will confirm. Yeah, I don't want to say one where, and maybe Mark, because he just, maybe he has that answer offhand, but I.
It does, it's not related, the budget approval for the building is not related to the completion of the architectural engineering plans. So I was a little confused when that.
Yeah, so the budget is not tied, but we can't move forward with an RFP until we have the scope of work from the architect and engineer.
Correct.
That is correct.
That's different than the budget approval for the dollar amount. You also cannot go for the RFP until you have the budget approval for the dollar amount. Both those things have to happen. My question is, when, I have questions on when both those are going to happen, but my question today is, when will the council be considering the budget approval request? A and E work is another question.
So the easier one for me to answer on the architect and engineer, the contract has not been signed yet. It's still in negotiation. The work is included in that. The earliest that will be signed is within the next couple of weeks to another month, but it'll take at least three months to do the review before we get the scope of work. So it'll probably, earliest it'll be December that we'll have the scope of work.
Just a clarifying question. What we're doing today is giving the nod for these to move forward, but there'll be an additional counsel?
Yeah, it's set aside. Setting aside funding for the specific project. And that will be considered on a Tuesday meeting too. It's not final today.
Right, so there would be an opportunity if the public wanted to weigh in on any of these.
Correct.
So circling back to what Michelle raised, I just want to add the comment, because from the very beginning of this process, I was always looking for ways, from my point of view, to get the most bang for the buck for the longest period of time. I mean, we, this is not sustainable money. It is one-time infusion, and boy, capital projects are a great way to spend this money, whether it's the jail, improving your work situation for the next 20 years. I'm looking for a way where I consider it a legacy, an infusion of cash, and if we do still have uncommitted funds in that regard, I mean, I love the program that we have with the treasurer for improving the ability for some people on the edge of not having a down payment for a mortgage. I don't like the way it's set up presently because I don't think we have the right formula for appreciation, but I'd like to put more money in a program like that. I'm looking for things that will go out into the future and be an investment now that will, things that we need. And this is one thing we need, and it's a way to fund it that, you know, four years ago, before we knew about ARPA funds, we wouldn't, you know, it would have been just something on the horizon as a budget challenge. We have an opportunity to achieve some of this. The North County EMS building is one of them. I mean, they wouldn't have had it built if we didn't contribute these ARPA funds. The broadband expansion, you know, those are capital projects that will pay dividends out into the future. So I'm supportive of moving this forward in the dollar amount that we have, and hopefully with the 10% potential for overruns. Glenn, I haven't heard from you.
Yep, I've just been waiting for my turn. I did have my bigger concern from this month or two ago, whenever that was, that we talked about it, was in the context of the whole facility study that we are doing, I'm okay, you know, earmarking these funds, because I do believe that we do need a good facility for our auditor to be able to do his job properly, but I'm concerned about moving forward with this and getting the ball rolling on architectural and engineering without, or if we don't know the overall picture of our entire capital facilities, and I'm curious where we're at with that.
So I would say with the overall space planning, the piece that we're waiting on was just approved, and that was the family law, NX and CJC move, because that lease ends. So with that, what the auditor is requesting would be in alignment with the outcome of the space planning.
Okay, that's great to know, then I'm fully supportive.
So we'll move this one forward.
It sounds like you have support of three of us.
Great. The next one, and we have just a couple more to go through, sorry, is the request from the prosecuting attorney to continue their program to help the backlog of court cases that were created by the pandemic. They have, currently, they have positions that are being funded through the ARPA grant, and this would continue those into 2024. So questions? And I believe our.
And the P.A.'s here. Did you want you to add to that or just wait for questions?
Just here, there are questions. Mr. Gassaway, I think is just very competent over this, but it's questions, I'm here also.
I have a question. Of these 11 FTEs, were these new positions, are they?
No, these are, so these are positions that are currently in the office that have been funded through ARPA already. If we don't receive, if we don't continue to use this ARPA funding through 2024, I'd have to lay all those positions off, which would be a very, very significant blow to the criminal justice system.
Were they, but they were originally funded as new positions with ARPA?
With ARPA, yes.
With ARPA.
With ARPA, okay. And is there a plan going forward after the ARPA dollars to fund these positions?
We've seen very significant changes sort of at the same time that this ARPA funding has been used for these positions, and frankly, if we hadn't used ARPA funding, I'd be here saying we need to use general fund for this or public safety sales tax for this. The changes in bail law and bail practice have very significantly impacted the time it takes to resolve cases. We really saved money by having fewer people incarcerated pretrial in the jail, and the jail population is much lower, but that, you know, if you change one piece of the system, there are impacts on the other parts of the system. So the amount of time to resolve cases is longer, and it will be longer, and I don't see a change to that. The amount of time that people in the prosecutor's office take for family leave has really changed. I, you know, I think Counsel Medjig can think back to when he was Assistant Deputy District Attorney, and when I was a young deputy prosecutor, it was normal to take two weeks off when he had a little one and the laws changed, and, you know, people take a lot of time off now, and we have a lot of folks in the office that have young families. So that, that's a change that's, it's not going to change back. So there are some structural things that have occurred. We are still in the middle of, you know, kind of working through what I would call a new normal in the justice system with respect to kind of how cases are processed, how long they take to process. We have very, very hard, high trial numbers now. I hope that that will go down, you know, in a year or two, but I think that that's going to continue for a certain period of time. And then we're also seeing at the same time, significant upstaffing in law enforcement by all of the agencies around Clark County, and all of those cases all come to the prosecutor's office. So I heard the Vancouver Police Chief say just recently that VPD is fully staffed up, and they haven't been fully staffed up for a long time. The sheriff is reporting good news that, excuse me, that, you know, he's able to get people in the door again now, so, and then I was just at a law and justice council, or excuse me, a law enforcement chief's council meeting recently, and they're all talking about not only that they've got all the positions filled, but they're kind of going around the table and talking about how many new positions each of the agencies were going to be getting next year, and most of them are all getting new positions. So all of these factors are kind of working together. I don't see the need for these positions to go away in the foreseeable future. I think we're really fortunate to be able to continue to not have to use general fund and continue to use ARPA funding for these positions. But when ARPA funding does run out, we're going to have to have serious conversations about what to do about these positions, because I don't think we're going to be able to function a year or two or three years from now without these positions, and we may likely need more positions as cases go up.
Thank you for that explanation. I will support this.
So I want to add to the discussion, because we're really going to get into this challenge with pretty much every elected and every department requesting all these new full-time positions. I mean, it's an enormous explosion of requests. It all needs to be sustainable, and I know the county manager is going to be looking really hard at trying to figure what, how the budget will be able to be sustainable. These positions, and I do have a question for you, these positions were seen as project positions to get us through the pandemic and all the impacts from all the challenges that we had. So yeah, looking into the future as law enforcement ramps up and fills all their positions and start making more arrests and requests for criminal complaints, how that impacts the court, how that impacts our public indigent defense and prosecutor's office, it's, we have to figure out what's going to be sustainable or not. So the question was this though, because in my recollection, when we first, we're walking out on the pier, talking about these, the possibility of these positions, I recall that it was, there were six positions, and I know the staff position, the staff report is highlighting 11 full-time positions. So was there, were there positions added along the process, or was it always 11? And in answering that, you might give Sue and the other counselors an idea of what those positions were, because they weren't all prosecutors, victim advocates. I mean, can you just outline what the 11 positions were?
Sure, yeah. There's been no addition of positions. I think when you and I were talking, I was talking about the six DPA positions, Deputy Prosecutor. I was talking about the six DPA positions, deputy prosecutors. And then the other positions are support team positions. If we just add a bunch of deputy prosecutors, then the support team crashes. So you have to, you know, have those positions as well. So I think that was your recollection, Counselor Medvedje, that we were talking specifically about DPA positions at that point. But it was always a total of 11, so there was no change.
Are there comments or questions? Michelle, Glenn?
Yes, I've got a comment, Counselor Medvedje. So just so I'm understanding this correctly, so if we didn't have ARPA funds, we wouldn't be able to afford these FTEs at all, correct?
A question for me, or, because I would certainly be asking for funding for the, I would have been asking for funding for these positions through other funding mechanisms. We've been really fortunate in the prosecutor's office to be able to take advantage of funding that doesn't impact, you know, our county budget through using ARPA funding for these positions. We've been able to, for auto theft cases, get new funding for prosecutors to handle just auto theft cases because those have just been rampant over the last few years. So we've really been aggressive in trying to use grant funding for these positions. But, you know, there will be a point where this ARPA funding does run out, and I'm going to want to have, continue to have these conversations, you know, when that occurs. Because Counselor Medvedje is absolutely right. You know, it will run out, and we'll have to figure out, you know, what are we going to do? But, you know, today, we have the ARPA funding, and, you know, so I just can request to continue to use it for this. Conversely, if we were to not use it, again, I would be having conversations about, well, we have the new public safety sales tax, but we don't need to tap that for these positions because we can use ARPA funding. And I think that's the correct answer for today.
So did we have these positions prior to ARPA funds?
No, these, like you say, there have been significant changes that, really, the model in the criminal justice system, there have been very significant changes. If you were to go back a decade versus now, there have been changes to the law and practice and how bail is used. And like I said, that is a significant cost savings to the jail. We used to have a jail population of up to 700. In fact, we were over 700 a day for average daily population before changes were made. Now we have a daily population of about 400 people in the jails. So there's very significant savings there. The population in Clark County, you may have noticed, has increased. Crime has unfortunately gone up. Law enforcement staffing has gone up, which is a very positive thing. And if you have all those things go up and you don't, over a period of time, also increase resources in the prosecutor's office, and you just create a bottleneck, and you have law enforcement officers that are performing their function and no prosecutor to do the next, you know, part of the criminal justice function. So, you know, over time, you know, all of those positions go up. But the changes that have just happened over the last few years have really kind of impacted it more significantly. Like I say, the changes to family leave laws have really impacted our office. Changes to bail practice, changes to how the Superior Court has implemented new docket systems. All of these things taken together have impacted, you know, how things work at the prosecutor's office. I'm a lot of this hopeful, but maybe, oh, sorry, go ahead, counselor.
So Kathleen, I have a question for you. So just like we were discussing previously, the elections. So if the council approves to move this particular, the FTEs forward, it's not going to be fully funded until later in October, just like the elections project?
It would, this would be part of the 2024 budget process. And the date for that hearing, I believe, is the first part of December. We'll have work sessions in November.
Okay, so just, so just so I know, because I'm still a newbie, if we approve this, that doesn't mean we're approving it to be fully funded because this is a work session and not a county council meeting, correct?
Yes, so this staff report will come back before council on a Tuesday meeting, and then it will be solidified during the budget process as previously approved. And this is only committing the funds through the end of 2024.
Okay, so this is committing the funds then during this meeting?
Not this meeting. When it comes back to you on a Tuesday meeting, and if council votes to support this, then it will include that funding. It'll through 2024 for those positions.
Okay, okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, and Tony, just real quick, part of this originally too is due to backlog, right, because of COVID, which is the original request?
That's a piece of it as well. What I'm saying is that we have all of these other things that are happening now. That, you know, the backlog was the, you know, the huge thing. We're still working through the backlog to a significant degree. But now we just have these changes to the system that they're not changing back that I can see. So, and I just, I want to also comment on that timing piece. So, you know, I need to get an answer on this, not in December, because...
Yeah, it'll be a Tuesday meeting to set this aside. I think the December is the technical adjustment for the 2024 budget to make sure it's in your budget. But yes, this staff report, am I correct? This will be back on a Tuesday, possibly the next Tuesday meeting, which is the middle of September for council's consideration.
So was that a thumbs up ultimately, Michelle, at this point?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. I mean, obviously, I just want to touch on, and you were in the public safety presentations that Tony also made at that point, as well as every other department asking for a lot of full-time positions off the public safety sales tax. We're going to have a lot of hard decisions in the future. I think of these positions, just like Laura, what a godsend she's been as a project position in doing this, keeping track and keeping us on the straight and narrow as far as our ARPA funds and how we expend them and how these contracts are written. These are temporary, these are temporary positions, project positions. We're not going to have ARPA beyond another year and a half, two years from now, 2026, 2026. So we have a lot of hard decisions on the budget to confront us. But I'm supportive of this. While we do have the ARPA funds, you know, I'm not prepared to tell the prosecuting attorney's office we're pulling the plug on these 11 positions right now because we do have the funding for it, and they have justified the positions because of the circumstances and all the changes that the PAs just outlined for us. Glenn, I haven't heard from you. Questions or comments, thumbs up?
Thank you, thumbs up. But I would like to put some emphasis on how we're going to, I would like to see a plan for how we're going to continue funding these in the future. From my understanding, I don't believe these positions would be eligible for ARPA funding because they, or not ARPA, but for the public safety sales tax because they're existing FTEs. And I think, if I'm correct, they have to be new FTEs.
That's not, yeah, Counselor Young, that's not correct. Public safety sales tax funding can be used to cover, and we actually currently are. We covered some of the increases for the corrections deputies and the deputy sheriff guild employees, and that's existing funding.
Okay, great, thanks for that clarification.
Thanks for bringing that up because I'll be talking about public safety sales tax as an obvious backfill at some point on these. But like you say, as long as we have the ARPA funding, makes sense to use it.
Great, thank you.
So I think we did hear support for moving forward on this.
And let me make one clarification on the ARPA funding. It's a little bit unique. We have until the end of 2024 to commit the funds. And so what you're doing today is essentially starting that process of committing the funds. The formal commitment comes when you approve the staff report. Today, you're just reviewing staff reports. But when you approve the staff report, you've now committed those ARPA funds. It still takes a budget action to go through the formal budget process. So I just want to be clear that there's a process here that we're trying to follow. The expenditure of the funds can go until 2026. So even though you have a committed project, let's say we committed at the end of December 2024, you still have two years to spend those funds. Okay, I just want to be clear on that, so, okay.
So I think we're ready for the medical examiners?
Medical examiner, thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
As you know, the medical examiner has had a lot of strain on their office simply because of some of the increased issues due to the pandemic. They have a couple of requests here. The first one is regarding trays. I don't know a whole lot more than that. If they're on and you would like to ask them questions, I think I would encourage Jeff to be a... Oh, here he is.
This is Dr. Atlin Melnick. I'm the public health director and health officer for the record. I have Doreen Gunderson, who's our operations manager in the medical examiner's office, and I think she can speak to this.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Melnick, and good morning, counselors. We are requesting this one-time use of ARPA funding to purchase 15 new body carrier trays, which is what we store our decedents on in the cooler as well as on our carts for autopsies and examinations. These trays have not been purchased in over 10 years, and we have multiples through daily use that have become slightly damaged and cracked and are no longer meet the standards for accreditation. So we'd like to use this funding to make that purchase.
I'm trying to think back in the very few autopsies I attended as a prosecutor. These trays are basically a temporary storage as well as a platform to conduct the autopsy on. And I'm trying to envision what it is. And they last for a good number of time. It's not a one-time use. Can you tell me how, how long they do last for? Are there any other alternatives other than these plastic trays? I guess that's the fundamental question.
Counselor Medvedje, you're correct. They are used for both. They are a long-term tray. And I have only been in the role less than two years and, or less than a year. I've been around two years. The last purchase I could find was in 2009. So they do last a very long time. And they are used for storage as well as the examination. So they are dual-purpose. We have about 24 slots. And these, being able to purchase 15 would allow us to replace the ones that are cracked and also have a few extras on hand should we need to replace those in the near future.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
No, but I would support this.
Okay, I do as well. Other comments or questions?
I agree as well.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll move that one forward. Then as long as we have the medical examiner on, they have one more request regarding modifications of the morgue, so.
Turn that over to Doreen as well.
Yes, thank you so much. Okay, we are requesting 1.2 million for the purchase of a Lodoc's machine and also to basically retrofit our basement to expand our cooler, but also to install, the purchase and installation of this machine. It's an outstanding opportunity for our office as death rates continue to rise each year and forensic pathologists are becoming more scarce. As you know, you approved a recent sole source contract for locum tenens to come and help us out. Not having a doctor here on site daily reduces the amount of cases that we can get done in the timeframe that we would like to, to get answers to families, answers to law enforcement, and also meet accreditation standards. The imaging equipment would allow us to take a full-body x-ray within 13 seconds and identify internal concerns that we currently would only be able to identify through a full autopsy. This machine would also prevent our autopsy technicians from having to maneuver our decedents into multiple positions, which our current x-ray machine requires. So that's a risk management win. We are also paying a higher rate of pay per autopsy versus external exam to the locum tenens. And so having fewer autopsies necessary to perform would save money for the county in the long run.
Counselor Medvedje, can I ask a quick question on the staff report?
Yeah, please.
Okay, I just wanted to ask on, Doreen or Dr. Melnick, on the additional imaging equipment, is that something that can be moved to another location?
Yes, we can take it with us should we move. Great question.
The reason I'm asking is my understanding that the current location used to be a bar. It was not built to be a medical examiner office. So it is not conducive in its totality. And talking with Michelle Schuster, one option that we're kind of keeping our eye on is if like a funeral home becomes for sale or if we need to look at building another facility in the long run. So I just want to make sure that the investment that's being requested today can continue if we find a location for them to move in the future. Thank you.
So this is a new request for me, and I'm completely unfamiliar with this equipment. Is there an analogy to something you may see in an emergency room or a well-equipped hospital? What, is it like an MRI? I mean, how will we, how does this work?
Go ahead, Dr. It's a total body scanner. I don't know if I'd call it, and it's not an MRI. It's an x-ray machine, so, but it's a total body scanner and can do a total body scan in 13, basically in 13 seconds. It actually reduces the amount of time to do an autopsy and really can, you know, in these forensic cases, can highlight things pretty quickly. So it actually reduces the amount of forensic pathologist time needed to do these cases. But it's a, it's an x-ray scanner, so it's not an MRI.
So are these found in most medical examiner offices in other counties? Is it presumptive? Does it just point to where the autopsy needs to be directed? I mean, is it something relied upon in court? I'm just completely unfamiliar with this. Do you have any more detail?
I'll let Doreen answer, and then I'll supplement as necessary.
Okay, great question, Counselor Medvedje. These are used, I know for sure, in King County and Pierce County. I know that Snohomish recently received approval for the purchase of a Lodoc. So with the, my understanding is with the shortage of forensic pathologists that a lot of medical examiner offices are moving in this direction. Like Dr. Melnick said, it will reduce the time on, not only does it reduce the need for a full autopsy by giving the images that are scanned, but it can also reduce the timeframe that it takes to perform an autopsy. Dr. Burt, our chief medical examiner, had shared with me that a decedent with multiple gunshot wounds might take up to eight hours to perform a full autopsy. But utilizing a Lodoc's scan to have the imaging of where those injuries took place, it would reduce the timeframe to about two hours. So that allows us to achieve more exams in a more timely fashion, which is extremely important as we have fewer doctors on site and have to utilize them while they're here.
And I would add that this is, this is objective data that can be used in court. So to answer that part of the question, the answer is yes.
Super, okay. Other questions?
Just a comment. This sounds like it's a good investment as improving efficiencies and with us contracting for pathologists. It all sounds like wise use of our dollars.
Other questions, comments? Michelle, Glenn?
Well, nothing for me. I...
I agree with this.
Counselors, as part of this, there's also the cooler expansion. So I think it's part of the same staff report, is it not?
That's correct.
Glenn, do you support it?
Yes.
Okay, and as do I. Thank you, Dr. Melnick and team.
Thank you, counsel.
All right. Thank you for your perseverance. We have one staff report left, and then I have one item that I want to also bring forward. So this last one is community development request. As just recently, they've received this request to do this revisions to the agritourism-related activities, and they do not have funding for it. So this would provide funding for them to complete those activities out. We know, we can't use the funds that are in the building funds for this activity. Those can only be used for building-related activities. So the option is to fund this either through a grant, the ARPA grant, or through a general fund. And so they've requested that we do this through the ARPA grant.
And I think Counselor Medveji are the one that actually kindly said, hey, look at ARPA. So that's why this is before you.
Well, yeah, I'm always thinking of ways to spend money or not. So I'm fully supportive of this. And we just had this meeting the other day too, and it kind of briefly got mentioned for community planning. Hey, we may not have the capacity to look at our railroad and those development issues, and maybe we need to hire a consultant. Another target area for a one-time investment that may pay dividends for many decades down the road. Comments or questions on this package?
That thumbs up for me.
Michelle, Glen.
Yes, I do have a quick question. I was curious, why in the staff report it stated that it's not an eligible use of planning and code fund dollars?
Right, that's what I just, yeah. And that's exactly what I was trying to explain. The funds in Fund 1011 are building, are restricted to specific activities related to the fees that we collect. So we cannot use those to, those funds to do this project.
So is, I guess my furthering question would be then, is this facilitating outside, you know, anybody from the outside? Or is this just kind of supplementing the department that the staff time is being given or taken from?
It's for, yeah, it's for existing staff time to do the work. The staff in that department have to code all of their time accordingly. So as Mark mentioned, it can't be coded to the current funds that they have. So the only two options we have is council approving general fund to offset that or the ARPA funding, so that staff can account for their time accordingly.
Okay, and then this kind of leads to just a comment that I wanted to make about all of these requests that we received. And this is kind of to build on a bit of what Counselor Medveji had mentioned earlier is that all of these expenses, virtually all these expenses that we had mentioned today are expenses that we would have had to paid regardless and would have come out of the general fund. So my question is, first of all, is it, is it true that we wouldn't have been able to fund these in our current capacity? Or if so, if we were, then what are those general fund dollars going to be used for that are freed up by using the ARPA funds? And then the second question is, in terms of budgeting in the future, how are we ensuring that we'll be able to pay for replacements and other things like the similar in our budget process in the future without ARPA funds?
And let me answer that, counselor. Most all of the projects that we're paying with ARPA funds are one-time projects that are specifically related to either something caused through the pandemic or some situation within the organization that we've had to adapt to. So to answer that question, these not, wouldn't necessarily be projects that we would have done. For example, the community grants. We would not have done the community grants had we not had ARPA funding. And there's a whole list that we could go through, things that we have done to help provide relief from the pandemic. Within our own departments, within our own departments, for example, there are certain projects that we may have done or may not have done. We may have used general fund. We may have used other funding sources. So you're correct, we would have had to find alternative funding if we had chosen to go forward with those projects. So a lot of these are outside of the normal scope. Some of them that are within, like the facilities, we would have had to look at an alternative funding for those.
And for anything that council has approved that's service-driven, so like the PA talked about earlier, there's going to need to be additional discussions as that funding will end for them on how they're going to do continuity of service moving forward. And I'll also say that with community services. So what they have done with the money that they've allocated is they've spread it out over the entire term in which we can pay to extend that service out to the 2026 year. And so that's why it's not spent down on time. But at that time, though, if council and if staff's recommending to continue some of those services that will be reduced in 2027, we're going to be discussing that as part of that annual budget process because the funding is not available beyond that date.
Glenn, I want to add just one other thing. At the very beginning of ARPA, you know, there are business rules that we had to abide by, and Marcus kept us on the straight and narrow on all of them. But we were able to pass, and I think it was originally $10 million, right to our general fund. And once it hit the general fund, then we were able to apply it to other potential needs. So, you know, some of this is replacement funding that we move around. And then, you know, once it's in the general fund, then we have a lot more flexibility of how the funds can be spent. But again, those, you know, harkening back, we are going to have a lot of hard decisions once we get to the budget approval on moving forward because the ARPA funds are only here for a couple of years. Glenn, do you support this package? I just want to be clear, and Michelle?
Yes, thank you.
I have some questions. Can you go back to the staff, staff report slide? The information on the, this funding approval? It's like the spreadsheet is currently on the screen right now. Okay. So basically, this is just overtime for existing employees, right? To work on this, or five, or 10, or 20?
No, it's not overtime. It's their time, regular time worked. That department has to allocate their time to different funds. So this is for their work, not overtime, to do the work that does not fit into their budget.
Okay, and just to refresh my memory with the ag work, is this related to the winery issue that's related to ag? I cannot recall.
Yes, this was brought up, I think discussed last week at council time when April presented about the application request for different people to be part of that ag commission or to look at the winery from different perspectives, like small farms was one. There's like three or four criteria on that. So it's related directly to that work.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay, I support this.
And there you have it.
Okay, so let's go back to the first slide real quick and just want to summarize where we're at. And if you could scroll down, thank you, Rebecca. So as you can see, we started with about almost 13 million, 12.79 uncommitted. The total sum of all, everything that we've talked about today is just about $8 million. So we still have some uncommitted funds. Next year, or at some time in the future at council's request, we will do this again and say, what funding do we have available? What needs to be committed? The catch is next year is the last opportunity that we'll have to commit funds. As Counselor Medveji said, a lot of the funding from ARPA, not a lot of it, but a good portion of it, were able to recapture through revenue recovery. If you look at the top section of this slide, you'll see so far we have been able to move about $33 million into what we call revenue recovery. And again, it's a process of moving it over into the general fund. The projects that we've allocated to that money don't change. We're still paying for those. We're just paying for those out of general fund. So as you approve projects with ARPA funding, we want to make sure we're not double counting the funds just because they're moved over into another fund. And we're not dropping projects. They're still related to your original approved projects. So you'll see that we've moved some projects over into that revenue recovery category to closely match how much we've moved over in revenue recovery. I hope that makes sense. It sounds a little confusing, but.
And I just want to add one other point to that because some of these issues, like, and I'll just point to the homeless, 15.5 million that we allocated to that. Some of these have been really constrained by capacity issues, meaning we're not able to spend it easily because we don't have the capacity to do so. So I'm hoping over time, because I know the county manager supports this, we, we're not going to return a single dollar. We're going to put it all to good use. So I'm hoping if we run into capacity issues, like the homeless expenditures, and I'm still thinking of the future of maybe purchasing some pallets and creating some safe stay or something like it. I'm hoping we, if we're running into capacity issues and we're not kind of spending down that money that we've already allocated, that we can recapture it and reallocate it to some use that we can spend it on.
Once, once the funding's been moved over into revenue recovery, there is, there's no risk. If a project were to come in under, we could reallocate that within general government purposes. So that's, it's kind of our shock absorber of how do we prevent having uncommitted funds that we'd have to send back to the Department of Treasury? So we would move those projects over. Everything that gets spent in the ARPA category will be reported as such. Revenue recovery gets reported in a separate category. And I, I'm sorry, I do have one more thing. Counselor Medveji is aware of this. One of the previous grants, community grants that we, and I just received this Monday, so you don't have a copy of what I have in front of me. One of the previous grants for Outsider Inn contacted us because they had some overruns in their project. And they have a request, there's an outstanding amount that they've requested of 14 for. The total overruns in their projects that they have paid out of pocket in addition to that $14,000 is about $40,000. So the request is to, at a minimum, consider, and what I'll do is I'll have a staff report for this as well because it would have to be approved through a staff report. I just didn't have time to put it together before this morning. The minimum request would be to pay the outstanding invoice, but then consider paying the full amount of the overrun, which was about $54,000, so. And if, if the council's willing, I'll put that also forward in a staff report like these others, and we'll present it on a hearing. I just want to know if there's support to have that. Again, it was a previous community grant for Outsider Inn. The full grant amount was 123.5, but the cost of their construction came out at about 178, so.
And Mark, with the other capital items that were, that are going to be coming forward, can we add the contingency on the requests at that point?
I'll take a look at that and see how we can factor that into the staff report.
I'd be supportive of that. But I had a question on the revenue recovery. I'm not sure, is it the remaining column that you're referring to as revenue recovery?
On the revenue recovery, if you look at the committed, you see the $33,000. That has been already moved over or is eligible to be moved over. What did I say, 33,000? Sorry, 33 million. These are all in millions, so, sorry. So the 33 million is already eligible for revenue recovery. We'll have one more year, which is 2023 this year, that will have about another 18. So the total will be about 51 million. The rest of the expenditures will be specifically made out of the ARPA fund, and then everything else we could make out of the general fund or the general government.
Okay, thanks.
So I do support the amendment to pay for their overage. Obviously, it's a significant overage. And I did meet the contractor that was there, but I didn't get, ask him why it was so much over. And I just want to highlight too, because we're obviously partnering with a lot of organizations and trying to get the money out into the community and put it to good use. The shelter's right across the street. It's a great partnership together with the church. It's their building that saw these capital improvements. And they're also looking into the future of perhaps opening up for daytime services as well. You know, that's a real challenge because they also have preschool and church school and other activities that are inconsistent with the, anyways.
And I think they're available, either they're on or they're here in the room if you have questions for them.
Okay.
Is anyone here from Outsiders Inn that's, hold on, Rebecca has them.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess the question was, that's quite an overage.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. One of the significant overages for the church was the backflow system had to be redone with the new addition of showers and toilets. We had unanticipated asbestos abatement that happened in one of our sections of ceilings. The contractor originally suggested that they would pay for the shower trailers, the rentals for a shower trailer, but couldn't find alternate shower trailers. So we ultimately did find a vendor and paid out of pocket for those showers for a total of about $12,000. So this is just some of the areas. Plus, the bid did go over from the original bid because of construction costs.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Other counselors' questions or?
Identify who that was.
I'm sorry?
I don't know who is speaking.
Go ahead. Did someone else have a comment? Do we have a third counselor that is supportive?
I support this.
Just one quick question. Were the?
I'm sorry, Glenn, I couldn't hear. Go ahead, Glenn, I couldn't hear you.
Were the increases in the construction costs related to change of scope or change orders? Or was it construction materials?
I believe part of it was old building and unanticipated damages within the building. And then also a change in cost of some of the materials related to the electricity and plumbing.
Okay, thank you.
So Glenn, are you supportive as well?
Yes.
Thank you. And thanks, Adam, for pursuing this and all the great work you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's all of the requests we have for today. I apologize if it's taken so long to get to this, but there's, you know, a lot to do. As we go through the ARPA process, we'll again, this is the last opportunity that we gave departments and external people for this year to make sure that we had them included in the 2024 budget. So we won't be going through another cycle like this until either spring or sometime next year to see what we have uncommitted. And then we'll have one more shot at committing that, so.
Super, thank you very much. So we're prepared to move on to new business, but does anyone need a five-minute break before we do so?
I would like one, Counselor Medveji.
All right, so well, let's come back just after 11:00. We'll take a little recess here. All right, we're back. All right, we're back being recorded, and we're ready for new business.
Well, thank you, Councilor Medvee. For the record, Greg Kinsey, Clark County Auditor, have with me Mark Gasway, Finance Director, Mitchell Kelly, the Reporting and Analysis Manager. We're pleased to present to you the annual report for last, for 2022, as well as what's referred to as the Popular Annual Financial Report, and then also update for the second quarter of this year. So turn it over to Mr. Gasway.
And I'm going to quickly turn this over to Mitchell Kelly. First of all, thanking his department. He works with a group of highly qualified professionals that prepare these reports on behalf of the county. So although these reports are created in the auditor's office, they are on behalf of the county, and as he'll explain, are actually on behalf of the county council. So I'm going to turn the time over to Mitchell, and he's going to go through the annual financial report, the popular annual financial report, and then also our quarterly report for 2023, the second quarter.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to be here this morning. Yes, still morning. And the, as Mark indicated, that annual comprehensive financial report is an extensive, highly technical report that is prepared and compiled by my team, but it represents the work of everyone in the county. Everyone, their diligence in reporting financial information accurately really helps prepare the financial report in total. And we ensure that the report complies with governmental accounting standards and generally accepted accounting principles. And it is an extensive report that is just under two-hundred-and-fifty pages. We're not going to go into detail on those report, that report. But I did want to just quickly, briefly touch on a couple of the things. And I see that you have the Popular Annual Report, which is a simplified version of this annual financial report. We are required to report this, this annual comprehensive financial report per guidance and regulations and requirements. We've prepared the Popular Annual Financial Report for the past, this is the third report that we've done of the popular, to engage the community and help make this information that we present in the, in this more technical report easier to access. And all of these reports are available on our website for anybody to review. But as Mark indicated, and I do have the, a couple of the annual comprehensive financial reports, if you'd like to review them. This report on the opening page is directed to the citizens of Clark County as well as to the councilors. We prepare this report on, with those audiences in mind, and does follow some required language. So although it's presented to those individuals, it's helpful to go over to explain some of the complexities of the report. And I'd like this, if you have any questions, feel free to ask, yes.
So I would like a copy, a hard copy. But do you have a slide that shows the URL to anyone that may be watching this morning? Or to either the full report or the abbreviated report? There is one of those slides?
I'll find it.
Okay.
Yes, we can get the copies, hard copies to councilors as well if you're interested. On the first page of the report, after the introduction, it just identifies that it's addressed to the council. And this, what you're showing is the popular, so I'll talk about that in just a minute. But it talks about, just to highlight the level of why we do this report. And then on page five, one of the reasons that we do this report is we submit it to the Government Finance Officers Association for an award that the county has received for excellence in financial reporting for a number of years. And that's in this blue, this hard copy, yeah, the bigger one. On page five, that's, that's the report from 2021. And we submitted this current report at the end of June of this year for consideration for the 2022 award for this, from this organization. And then continuing on, this also includes a review that has been done by the auditors, by the state auditor's office. And on page nine of this report, it indicates that the auditors, and I'll read from this, that they state, "In our opinion, the accompanying financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities each major fund, and the aggregate discreetly presented component units and remaining fund information of Clark County as of December 31, 2022." That's just a portion in the second paragraph of that. What that means is that this is, this report, everything is supported that they reviewed. And so that's, that is a long way to say that that's the best thing that could happen as a result of the report. But that's just required language that the auditors have to provide to us. So this report is comprised of a few sections. We have the government-wide, which talks about the entire government of Clark County and how all of the funds roll up together. And then we also have in this report all of the specific funds that we report on, our funds that are considered major funds, which are, have high activity, and then all of the minor funds that have restrictions on how we can use those monies. And so all the detail is in this report, and that's why it expands and is quite large. We also are required to report in compliance with guidance from the Government Accounting Standards Board's Notes to the Financial Statements, Management, Discussion, and Analysis, and, as I said, those two other forms of showing the financial statements by fund and then also in aggregate. The Management, Discussion, and Analysis starts on page thirteen, and it gives a narrative of kind of the activity that has happened in the county over the year of 2022, and highlights the positive financial position that the county is in, and talks about in detail the changes that have happened year over year and some trends that we've noted. So at your leisure, that's, that's the extent that I'm going to go into this report. It's extensive, and at your leisure, you can feel free to review that. But I would like to go on now. Are there any questions about, from councilors about this first report?
If I could just share, I did find the report on the auditor's website under Financial Services, and then it has the full report. We can put a link on the council page, so anybody who's logging on to this meeting can find, we'll get a link out there for you. Thank you.
Super, thank you. And perhaps it'll put to rest the claim that we're paying international organizations like the United Nations dues that we never have, and there's no evidence of having these, the transparency in these detailed reports is important. So I'm not hearing any questions, Michelle, Glenn? Anything at this point? Okay, Harina, please continue.
Okay, great. Then moving on to the report that you do have in your hands as well, the Popular Annual Financial Report. As I mentioned, this also goes to the same organization, the Government Officers Financial Association. We've done this report, this is the third year. The prior two years, we did receive an award for excellence in financial reporting, and we submitted this report as well for consideration of that award again. But this report starts off with an introductory and a welcome to the county by the county manager, a letter that opens the report for the, for the readers and the citizens of the county, and then talks briefly about some demographics of the county, and then goes into detail about some of the financial information that is in the other, the first report that we mentioned. And it shares the statement of net position at a county level for all, all of the county activity, which is similar to a balance sheet, and then also the changes in net position, which is similar to an income statement. And some of the important things about this, you can see that our net position or our fund balance overall on the changes in net position page has steadily increased year over year, and that, which is a strong indication that the county is in a strong financial And then, and then we go into more details of how to analyze the funding, how we're receiving funding, of course. Operating grants is a large portion of the revenue that we've received due to the funding for ARPA and other departments that have received funding in assistance with recovery from the COVID pandemic. And then we have listed the uses of our funding, and then go into more specifics, specifically about the general fund, which is a fund, generally people are more interested in knowing how that funding is used. On the general fund page, which is about three pages, four pages in, indicates that the assigned fund balance, which is funds available for use is, has maintained at about forty-four million dollars, which is an increase over, over the years, the past three years, we have increased it, but it's remained consistent from prior year of 2021. The next page indicates how we receive property taxes and the distribution of the property taxes on an average basis. So people, when they consider the property taxes that the county collects, it actually is distributed to many different jurisdictions, and it's helpful for citizens to understand where the, that is being distributed to. The final couple pages are, as of the end of the year, the American Rescue Plan, the ARPA funding. So that is different than what you reviewed earlier, but that's because it was as of the end of the year, and just kind of indicates what we have, the activity of that funding for the year. And then finally, we talk about capital projects and, and what the county is doing with public works on a high level. So are there any questions, comments about this report?
Just a comment from me. I appreciate all the detailed information. I'll look through that. And I think it's really important to have this popular report as well for the public to get a better understanding of things. I do have a specific question on the fund balance, just looking at how it's increased in the last couple of years. And is there, is there a particular goal we're looking for in looking at 2020? Were we nervous in 2020 with the fund balance of twenty-nine point one? Can you put that in perspective?
I would be more than happy to put that in perspective. So if you recall the events that were happening at that time, there was a lot of uncertainty. We didn't know the impact that COVID would have on county government, on revenues, and certainly on expenditures. So I think at a pretty high level, we discussed we are going to keep our expenditures at the minimum possible at that time and hope that our revenues would come in. Well, as it turned out, we did a really good job of holding the line on our expenses. Our revenues came in above what we had anticipated. We didn't know what happened to sales tax. And sales tax, we, you know, is one of our most volatile revenue sources. And it turns out that we started to see growth in sales tax, and that's kind of the, the beginning of that growth cycle. And as we're going to talk about today a little bit, we're starting to see that level off now. And so, yes, we did have a temporary increase between 20 and 21. Some of that went to fund balance. There were some other factors that were involved as well, but primarily our ability to maintain the line on spending and our revenues coming in at a higher rate than anticipated is what contributed to that initial growth in fund balance. Now, in this slide, if you could go back to that fund balance slide, there's a term that's being used there called, it's after this one, the page after this one. It's called unassigned fund balance. So if you recall, every year we come to you in the spring and ask, what would you like to do with fund balance that is in excess of our minimum fund balance policy? And there are times when you've made assignments to certain fund balance within the general fund. For example, this last year, the council decided that we would assign twenty million dollars to our capital improvement process. So that would reduce our available fund balance, our unassigned fund balance, because that is now considered assigned. So the numbers that you're looking at, and I believe it's.
I think it's one more slide.
One more slide down.
Two more.
Right there. So again, the title of being an unassigned fund balance means that we don't have a specific purpose in mind. It's in excess of what our minimum fund balance policy is. In 2022, you'll see we had about forty-four million dollars, almost exact same as 2021. If you were to look at our total fund balance, it's about, about seventy-nine, I think it's seventy-nine million dollars, because we have a minimum fund balance policy of about thirty, and then we have an unassigned portion as well. So this is just the unassigned portion. I hope that's.
Are there questions?
Clear as mud, right, I know.
Michelle, Glenn, any questions out there?
No questions. Thank you for the great work.
And we want to talk about the quarter.
Oh, yes.
We just want to update you because this is old information at this point, right? This is the 2022. It takes a while to get the report put together and audited, and so at this point, it's, you know, six, eight months old. But we wanted to bring you up to date where we're at through the end of the second quarter, through the end of June. And so that's going to be our, our quarterly update for the second quarter. And Mitchell's going to kind of walk through that real quickly, so.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mark. So that would be the quarterly report. Oh, there it is, yes, okay. And the second quarter, something to note here is our property tax has increased year over year. And the, the sales tax, you can note here that it is leveled off, and that as, as of the end of June. And we do have a monthly report that indicates that our, that our sales tax is bumped back up, which, sales tax is volatile, and so we anticipate, and we, we budget on a long-term strategy, not necessarily an annual strategy. So some of the fluctuation or leveling off, we would expect that sales tax would level off at some points during the long-range planning that we're budgeting, that we're doing. And then continuing on, looking at the other sections, the general fund expenses appear to be through the second quarter, right in line with what we would expect. About half of all of the expenses that were budgeted have been spent out of general fund. And so that's a positive thing for us to review, that we're staying on target with what we've budgeted in the general fund, both in revenues and then also in expenses. And flipping over to the next side of the report, we review briefly a few of the other funds, road fund. You'll note that there's, that there's a substantial amount of road fund left to spend. However, we're in the big part spending right now, so it's a cyclical fund. So we anticipate that they'll be spending a bulk of their budget during July, during this third quarter, July, August, and September, and the first half of the year. It's not surprising that it's a, it's a lower amount. And the first half of the year is not surprising that it's a, it's a lower amount. And then the community development, specifically, we look at the estimated general fund transfer that we will, we plan to do. And this is through the second quarter. So for the annualized portion of this, this would be doubled. So it'd be about 1.2, 1.3 million that we would anticipate. The general fund would subsidize the community development fund, which is in line with what we have done in the past. And then finally, this is the ARPA rescue plan grant. We just, our attempt to be very accurate and transparent, this is as of the end of the second quarter. So the information that we went over today is the most current. But our desire to inform the public of the financial status of, of the ARPA fund, we, we are reporting quarterly and regularly so that they are aware of the funding that's and how it's being used. Are there any questions about any of these reports?
I did have a question and then a comment. Where is REIT 1 and REIT 2? Is that bound within the bar of property tax or is it other or?
That's actually a separate revenue that it's not included on the quarterly report, but we do report it monthly. We have a monthly report and we're happy to send that to you. It's also available. It gets sent to the finance team, the county manager.
If you could just get me caught up, and I can't remember if it was REIT 1 or REIT 2 that we were paying back into, and I think
Yeah, that, that
How were we doing on?
We aren't, we finished that. We've already paid back the funding that we needed to put back into REIT 2. And then on the July, at the end of July, the amount available in the REIT 2 fund was just almost $31 million. So there's 30 million, 800,000. And then in REIT 1, there's 8 million, 700,000. So those are the balances at the end of July of this year. And those are, you know, pretty consistent for this year. They're up from last year, which is good, even though REIT is not growing as fast as it was in the past and is leveling out somewhat. It's still, the balance is still higher by a couple of million dollars in both of those areas.
Super. So here's my comment, and just to touch on that for the newer counselors. In the past, it was discovered that we had spent beyond the parameters or restrictions and had to, because of good auditing work, replace the funds in the REIT. And, you know, that was painful in the beginning, but these are very valuable and flexible funds, at least the one that has less restrictions. So we have an award-winning team here and I, and so I thank them. And these quarterly reports were particularly important. I think Mark was particularly proud of them. And, you know, we had so many unknowns as far as expenditures and revenue during the pandemic. There was just so much that we didn't know. And the quarterly report became really something, I think, the council universally said, hey, yeah, we want to see that. This is very, very helpful. So thanks for continuing on and having such a good snapshot of where we're at. Questions or comments from other counselors?
I have a comment, Councilor Mavigi.
Please, go ahead.
You mentioned the sales tax that it, did it go, you said the revenue from sales tax went down in the month of June?
Through the, through the second quarter, it leveled off year over year. So we didn't see a growth from prior year. It was the, the revenue that we collected in the first, or the second quarter, through the second quarter, was this, about the same as what we collected in 2022 for the second quarter.
Okay, because I thought, I could have sworn a couple of months ago, we exceeded expectations of sales tax collection for the county. Am I off?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure by exceeding, I'm not quite sure what you mean. However, for this year, we've seen a leveling of sales tax. Does that make sense? So we're not
Yes.
We're not growing as quickly. In prior years, I believe last year, we were about 8% for the year. The year before that, it was like 15%. So this year, our growth right now is just about zero growth. Doesn't mean we've decreased, it just means we haven't grown. And then again, kind of an update since the quarterly report, we looked at the month of July and for month over month, for July, we were up about four and a half percent. So if you look at just the month of July, we were up four and a half percent. So again, it fluctuates by month, it fluctuates by quarter, by year. We, we try and, you know, keep an eye on it. We'll look at it pretty closely because, you know, again, it's a big part of our general fund revenue.
Yes, yeah, that's why I asked. I was wondering, is there a long-term graph that the county's collected that shows like, that shows a span of like, say like a decade, just comparatively speaking?
One of the, yes, and we do use that. In fact, we use that in our assumptions for our forecast going forward. We've looked at over a 20-year span and our average growth in sales tax is about 4.2%. And if you think of the last 20 years, that includes some significant events, including, you know, the Great Recession back in 2009, 2010, and the pandemic. And so you're looking at years where you have actually, I'm trying to think of it, I think we had a 20% drop in those two years during the, during the recession. So we have a lot of fluctuations over those 20 years. However, over the 20-year span, it's just proven at about 4%. So we may have a year this year where we grow very little and next year, you know, we'll have, or like last year, we'll have an 8% year. So we try and be conservative in our, in our forecasting methodology to use a longer-term trend.
Right, thank you.
Any questions, Glenn?
No questions.
Super. So thank you again so much and for all you do every day and for the transparency that's provided in, in these reports. Anything further? Okay, so we'll move on then to counselor reports and reports by any counselor.
I'll just mention one thing. I've been approached by a couple of our state legislators, part of our delegation, who are interested in meeting with us on a regular basis. And after talking to Kathleen a little about this, apparently previously, there were regular meetings with the entire delegation. So I would just, I would just like to take a look at that and see if that's something we can start up again. I think even now, in prep, I think they're interested in preparation for the next legislative session, in hearing about what our concerns and interests are. So I think that'd be very worthwhile.
Yeah, I just echo, I missed those meetings. They were very helpful and it was nonpartisan and collaborative. And it was just very difficult during the pandemic, during the session years. And that's, I think, when, when the meetings started to fall off. If we could reorganize that, that would be super.
So just historical question, Councilor Mavigi. I know during the pandemic, we did do weekly meetings and rotated council through that. Did they do that prior to the pandemic as well?
So, I mean, I prefer in-person meetings and one of the troubles, or we always had a conflict and one of the reasons for rotating, you know, for if you're a WASAC meeting representative or on a subcommittee, they always seem to have the online Zoom meeting at the same time we were doing the meetings with the legislative council. I mean, I would prefer in-person, at least just restart the conversation while there's some dwell time before they really ramp up for the next session. That, I think that would be really helpful.
Yeah, it'll be an opportunity. We have Jordan Bogey, our new policy analyst here. I'll do an introduction with him and Josh and Annika from our lobbyist, who helps coordinate those discussions. I just didn't know if, I know the pandemic was unique in that they actually, as many as they could met with us every Friday during that time. I didn't know if we had those types of discussions prior to the pandemic. But we can certainly talk to Josh and Annika and see if they can get something regularly scheduled.
So we met in a little conference room down the end of the hall and it was nice and collegial and very, very helpful to all of us to talk about the issues that were really, you know, it's the rubber meets the road, is at the county level and, and our legislative delegation, I think, is more than willing to help in most, most areas. So thanks for bringing that up. Anything further?
Yes, thank you.
Glenn? Please, go ahead.
I don't have anything on my own, but I just wanted to double back on that. That's something that's been on my mind for quite some time and thank you, Councilor Marshall, for bringing that up and getting the ball moving on this. I think there was, there was some real events of disconnect that took place in this last legislative session. So I think this will be a very positive thing moving forward to be in constant communication with them.
Okay, Michelle, did you have any counselor report?
Um, just one thing. I'm sorry. Just one thing, Mini Haha Park in District 2 is undergoing a development changes and they are looking also to get community input to potentially change, well, not potentially, will be changing the park's name. So they're looking for public input on that. So if anyone's interested in submitting some recommendations, please reach out to the Parks Department.
Okay, thanks for that. I don't have any counselor report. Do we have work session requests?
There's no request today. And I did just want to respond real quick with Counselor Young. So during the last legislative session, the Monday meetings, that is normal. That happens during any legislative session. That includes Josh and Annika. So the delegation was not interested in meeting with council on a regular basis during the last session, but we will certainly get that invite out there.
I'm not sure if this is warrants a work session, but a couple of things I'm interested in, in hearing an update on the down payment assistance program, especially if in the future, we might be looking at committing some additional dollars. I'd just like to, and we've already expended the dollars, it'd be good to hear how that has gone. And then I've also had a request from the Alliance for Community Engagement. They're the organization, community-based organization that has worked on climate change issues. And I believe they've collected some signatures. I would be supportive of allowing them a little bit more time than the three-minute allocation, just to talk about some of the work they've done. I know they've worked with the Port of Vancouver and the city of, city of Vancouver. So I wonder if that would be an appropriate thing to allow them a little more, you know, 15, 20 minutes rather than the three-minute limit.
Okay, are we going to have a presentation by our new policy advisor on policy issues?
No, but I do want to close the loop. Is there a majority of the council that supports Counselor Marshall's request?
I really would feel a lot more comfortable if we had the entire council. And I'm not sure
Okay.
When we're going to have the chair back.
We can, we can bring it back as another item. I know we won't have full council next week, because I know one's on vacation. But maybe the, our next Wednesday meeting when everybody is here.
Super.
Would that be okay on the down payment assistance update or would you want to wait on that one too?
That's up to council.
Okay, I'm sorry. Specifically, what are you asking?
Well, I was asking for two things. One was an update on the down payment assistance program that we funded through ARPA. And the other one was hearing a brief presentation from the Alliance for Community Engagement on climate change.
Okay. That was my comment on that. I'd rather wait until the chair came back before we address. I don't know if we need a work session to hear from the treasurer.
No, I can put it on the council time agenda if she just has a brief update.
So I definitely would be interested in that because, again, my only objection to the program, and I thought, I think it's a super program. I think we should invest more into it because it really does build equity within the community for lifetime accumulation of, of wealth, if you're able to buy a home. My only objection was, you know, the appreciation in, of value of those homes, the equity that's in there. I think the model that was finally adapted will not be in perpetuity. I think over years, we're going to pay down that fund until it goes away. And that's not how it was originally sold to us. It was sold to us that it would just keep reinvesting and reinvesting and be there forever. And so, and I think we ultimately adopted some King County model that really gives all the appreciation, those funds to the buyer of the home, where it should be more of a shared formula so that the fund keeps reinvesting itself. So that was my concern. I did express it when we voted to approve it. But I want to know how, how it's being administered, you know, how, how many have we awarded? How many people have we helped? I know that the turnover will be hard to tell on that proportionality, you know, homes don't sell every, every year. At least I hope they don't. I, you know, hope people can live in them for a while and then we'll see how the fund works out. But So we'll deal with that as a one-on-one?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll reach out to the treasurer and see how her schedule is, put her on the council time agenda in the future, just to give an update on that program. And then Counselor Marshall, we can bring back up, I think, the Alliance for Community Engagement regarding the climate action when the full council's here for that.
Thank you.
Of course.
I think we're
So for, I do want to, yeah, one, Paul, I bet dual two. Again, I want to welcome Jordan Bogey for joining us. This is his third day on the job. I told him how nice everybody is here and, and I know he's got a lot of meetings with council and with department heads and different key staff. So that's, we'll keep him busy here in a short time and we're transitioning over some of the policy items. But one of the items I had, because there was one counselor I haven't heard back from, and it's regarding the safe stay location and discussion. So prior direction from council included getting pros and cons from Vanessa and Michael on that model, looking at costing from the city, which we have received. I know Counselor Mavigi and I were on a meeting with them to hear about their costing. The pros and cons were already done. And then the map that was sent out for county properties. I just want to make sure that council has what you need to have that discussion on a council time. And there's one counselor I have not heard any response from. So I just want to make sure that everybody, or if you're missing something or need additional information before, I just want to make sure we've got everything that you need before talking about this on a agenda.
So I'll be the first to admit, I've spread myself pretty thin on all the mills that I've been tilting at.
You agreed to move forward.
Yeah, no, but you said, what do we need? So you had sent an email that had basically a way into looking at all the county properties that are out there. That's what I haven't had a chance to weigh into, to see if there's anything visually that looks, okay, well, this has potential. So that's, I need to refocus on that. But yes, I, I am interested in moving forward, especially while we still may potentially have some ARPA funds for short-term infusion or capital purchase of pallets or some other hard stand that may be valuable to, to all of our city efforts and county efforts to provide a short-term shelter.
I just wonder if you could resend that list of properties? I recall looking at it and thinking, oh, my gosh, this is hard to decipher. So I'd like to, I'd like to look at it again.
I would as well, Kathleen. I don't, I've been, when I was out on vacation a couple of weeks ago, I might have overlooked it. So yeah, I, I concur with Counselor Marshall.
Chair, I've been out of town for a couple of weeks and definitely supportive of moving forward and I appreciate Kathleen following up on this, but I think I need a little bit more time to be able to respond to that request.
Okay, I will just touch base with you all on my one-on-ones towards maybe the mid to end of September, to see where we're at. Because, you know, from our perspective, we've got the
Is it impolite to ask who you haven't heard back from?
I hadn't received a response from Councilor Young.
Okay. Okay, Councilor Young, you've been called out. So we do have three executive sessions. So do, did you want to, is there a separate presentation on policy issues? Not today?
Not today.
Okay, super. So we do have still three executive sessions that I'd like to get through in a timely way.
And one of them may have potential after action.
All right, so 15 minutes, 10 minutes, and five minutes. Hopefully, we can stick to that, which is half an hour under RCW 4240. Well, the, I don't see Leslie here. She's got to be online or in?
Yes, she'll be online, joining us online. Yes, the legal counsel will be there.
All right, so with indulgence of the council, let's just plow right through it. Let's do our best to get right on. It's
12:15.
17 of, so I'm going to stick with the 30 minutes for right now. We'll come back at, at 15 afternoon, 12:15. All right, well, so we're in recess from this, so we can attend our executive session. All right, we're going to resume council time. We had our executive sessions. There is no action to take today. We will then adjourn. Thank you.